Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rule call, Todd Freelove.
Here.
Matt Murphy.
Here.
Tracy Altman.
Present.
Sherry Shirvin.
Here.
Ryan Davis. Jake Amidon.
Here.
Sarah Butler.
Here.
Matt Sickles.
Here.
And Tracy Marshall.
Here.
And myself. All right, here we go. Um, moving on to the approval of the agenda, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda?
May I have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda items, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I make a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G.
Um, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to board recognition.
Okay, so I will take it from there. This happens to be New York State School Board Appreciation Week, which is celebrated in October every year, and unfortunately, we can't all be together to celebrate as we have in the past. You know, in other years, we've had the pleasure of having some of our student groups come and sing for the board, and unfortunately, that's not possible at this time. But we'd still like to take this opportunity on behalf of students, families, staff, the entire Middle Lakes community to recognize and thank the Board of Education for their volunteer service to the community. I happen to know probably as well, or maybe better than most, just how much work goes into being a member of the Board of Education, how much sacrifice it entails, and that is, in fact, a completely voluntary service to the community. It involves a lot of meetings, as the board members will attest, and this is like number 15 to buy one. But we certainly appreciate all that you give. There's a lot of, there's quite a bit of time commitment. There's, you know, this board especially is committed to transparency and having honest, open conversations that can be difficult at times, and embracing difficult decision making. And I think this community is very fortunate to have the service of these seven individuals. Like I've said in the past, we've been able to recognize the board with refreshments and with student performances. This year is a little different. Unable to show, give some examples. The board had a retreat on Saturday, and we're able to share with them some cards that were made by some students at the primary level, and I want to recognize Ms. Reynolds kindergarten class, Ms. Missler and Mrs. Forrest first grade classes, Ms. Mayer's second grade class, Mrs. Estes and Mrs. Upchurch's third grade classes, and Mrs. Ross's K two, K through two class. Who, and more came in today, so next time I see you, I will share more. But they made these wonderful cards thanking the board for everything they do to keep them safe and have great opportunities available to them, and I know the board very much enjoyed receiving their notes from these students. We also had the opportunity to share with the board something that seemed to go over pretty well, which were these notebooks, which hopefully you can see it, which feature was affectionately referred to in these parts as the Macho Eagle, the Middle Lakes Eagle that many of our board members recall with great fondness. But these notebooks, just as a token of our appreciation for everything you do for this community. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Bill, who has a brief video that was prepared by Todd Clausen with the help of some of our Middle Lakes staff members.
Create a vision for our district.
Set a direction for achievement.
Ensure accountability.
Develop responsible budgets.
And support a culture conducive to learning.
And much, much more.
So this year, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For all you do.
In helping us be Midlake Strong.
Midlake Strong.
Midlake Strong.
Midlake Strong.
Now, more than ever, we need your support.
Your leadership.
And your compassion.
COVID has turned life upside down.
Teaching is different.
Sports aren't the same.
And nothing is how it was.
But thanks to you.
We are strong.
We are strong.
We are strong.
We are staying safe.
We mask up.
We wash up.
And we're watching our space, and we are learning again.
Together.
Being a school board member isn't easy.
There is no pay.
We know the hours are long.
And then there are those meetings.
Your work helps us stay strong.
You create a vision for our district.
Set a direction for achievement.
Ensure accountability.
Develop responsible budgets.
And support a culture conducive to learning.
And much, much more.
So this year, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For all you do.
In helping us be Midlake Strong.
Midlake Strong.
Midlake Strong.
Midlake Strong.
Now, more than ever, we.
Okay, we're live again. Okay, so unfortunately, the board was not able to see it, but hopefully, our community was able to watch it. We will email it out to the board so that they can see that short video of our, our Middle Lakes community saying their thanks, appreciation for all of you. Again, I wish we could be in person to thank and celebrate you, but thanks for all of you.
And I think I speak on behalf of everyone. We really loved the cards, so thank you for taking the time to do that. The student cards were great. Okay, moving on to presentations, the 2021-22 draft budget development calendar.
Great, I'm just gonna go ahead and share a copy of that for everyone. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, great. So here we go again, start of our 2020, 21-22 budget cycle. I just want to start by saying that this is a tentative budget calendar. We'll look at a draft tonight, and then you all will approve a final version in November. But that doesn't mean that we can't make updates as we go along. I think we all fully anticipate some, some changes, given the pending reduction in state aid. Certainly may have to have more meetings that are listed here, add different topics at some times. But this is just what we prepared for now, and as we go along, again, if we need to revise it, we will. So in November and December, and due in January, Matt will start meeting with the administrators and the directors to go over ongoing budget recommendations. On July, or January 11th, those administrators and department heads will submit a formalized budget recommendation to Matt. On the 19th, at the board meeting, as you recall, I generally split up the budget into three drafts, so we can look at specific, specific program areas. The first draft would address the operations, maintenance, and general support, such as the Board of Education, District Office, Business Office. Following that presentation, in February, we would be doing budget draft number two, where I would review debt service and our employee benefits, so healthcare, retirement costs. Those are always some interesting trends to look at, and we, we really look forward to hearing some of those projections at that time. As you know, they could really make or break a budget at certain years. In March, on March 1st, the state requires that I submit the tax levy limit to the Office of the Comptroller. This is just the limit that's calculated in a specific formula that is given to us by the state. That doesn't mean we have to set our tax levy at that time, it's just what we could potentially go up to in terms of a tax levy without a super majority. Um, between March 30th and April 3rd, we will start to publish the legal notice, so this would include any potential propositions that we may have on the ballot. The board would likely review those in March, at the March 15th meeting. They have to be advertised four times within seven weeks of the vote, with the first publication 45 days before the budget vote. And I will note here, when I talked about, you know, perhaps making some changes, we are unclear at this time how the voting will be conducted for the school budget vote, whether it'll be absentee ballot or some form of combination of in-person absentee ballot. So right now, again, this timeline is structured to kind of resemble a typical budget vote that we've had historically up until last year when COVID hit. Um, on April 5th, at the April 5th meeting, typically, we would have state aid figures finalized, and the board would make final budget decisions at that meeting. April 19th, the school board candidate nominating positions are due by 5:00 PM to the district clerk, which is 30 days before the actual election. At the April 21st meeting, the final draft of the budget will be adopted by the board. We will set all the information at their previous meeting on April 5th. The, the, unless there's some significant changes in between, usually, the April 21st meeting is more of a formality to adopt the official budget. Certainly, we could have meetings in between then, depending on what state aid looks like, but that's the plan for now. Um, property taxing report card, which is something that I have to completely submit to the state, which just goes over the state of our reserves, fund balance, our tax levy limit, and what we're actually taxing in a year-to-year comparison that has to be filed with the state. That needs to be filed the day after the board approves the budget. Uh, May 10th, we will do a budget hearing. This is, um, open to the public. It usually precedes our board meeting. And there will be budget statement and attachments available seven days prior to that meeting. The following day, we are required to then mail out the official budget notice to eligible voters. On the 18th is the statewide annual meeting, board election budget vote day, so that will be when our vote will be held. And in the unlikely event the budget is not passed, May 26 serves as a board meeting date to go over any possible contingency budget or, um, plans to revise the budget for another vote on June 15th. Is there any questions?
Again, this presupposes a regular, you know, routine, routine budget cycle with no interruptions, which we did not enjoy last year. So there's a number of things that, that could alter this. As Tracy said, mid-year reductions, if they are announced, would certainly either change our meeting dates or add meeting dates, or at the very least, change the schedule or nature of our conversations at some of these meetings. And we'll have to wait to see if there are any changes in the voting procedure in May that may impact those dates as well. But we hope to be able to follow this schedule as closely as possible.
Yes, since we don't know what is gonna come, we have to, you know, we have to act like that it's gonna be normal and then work off of that as changes come. So this, this looks great.
Yes, thanks. Okay, I will stop. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports, the superintendent's report.
Okay, I have a few things to share tonight. One is a statement that I've prepared. So the district was advised of a social event involving district students that occurred off-campus over the weekend. This was not a school sanctioned event, nor was the district involved in the planning. The matter was brought to the district's attention by the County Department of Health after the event had taken place. The health department relayed concerns surrounding the number of students present at the event and the apparent lack of adherence to COVID-19 safety protocols. We are working with the county on this matter, and presently, the county has not advised the district of any required quarantine measures, and no instance of COVID-19 has been reported. The district would like to remind all district students, families, and staff that your actions outside of school may impact your classmates and colleagues. The district takes seriously the safeguards we have put in place to limit the spread of COVID-19, and we encourage the Middle Lakes community to continue to follow those safeguards outside of school. I know that's been an issue of great attention over the last few days, so I wanted to address that upfront. I want to move on to an update on the expansion of our reopening plan and the hybrid model. As the board knows, fourth grade began the hybrid model last Tuesday, October 13th. Grade five started today, October 19th. Both returns gone well so far. We're off to a good start, and it's great to add more kids to our buildings, to the campus. Grade six is scheduled to begin the hybrid model on November 2nd. The big change there is that due to limited bus capacity, we, we fill our buses with social distancing with return of the fifth grade. So in order to accommodate the return of grade six, they will be on secondary school schedule. I believe Mr. Moyer intends to send out the cohort assignments for grade six tomorrow, and then bus schedules for those students will be mailed on Wednesday so that families have time to adapt to those much, much earlier pickup times that go with an approximate 7:30 start time for our sixth grades. We now turn our attention to the next grade levels, which would be seventh and eighth. We're internally talking about target dates, but we're continuing to collaborate and stay in touch with the County Department of Health as they are, you know, concerned about recent increases in the infection rate. For a long time, they have been averaging one or two new cases in the entire county per day. That is now up. They've had some double-digit days, and that is of concern to them. So as always, all of our decisions will be made in communication and collaboration with public health to ensure the health and safety of our students, which is why it is so important that everybody work together to make good decisions and follow those health and safety protocols, both at school and outside of school. So we're hoping to be able to hit all of our target dates and set new ones for new grade levels. But those target dates will always be subject to, to change, because we'll always give notice to families and staff so they can plan, and in the meantime, any number of things could occur that could cause us to have to change those dates. As always, students and staff should be prepared every day to switch to remote instruction on very short notice. Because again, any number of issues from short staffing due to, you know, symptoms and having to await a test, positive cases or exposures, or any number of things could cause me to have to declare a remote-only day or to put the school into remote learning for an extended period of time. So we encourage, you know, all of our families, students, or staff to be prepared for that possibility at any given time. Tomorrow, I'll be sending out a message to the families who opted to have their students stay in 100% remote instruction for at least the first quarter, if they were 712 or the first trimester, if they were UPK through six, as they approach those benchmarks, the end of the quarter and the end of the trimester coming up in the next several weeks. In the meantime, to plan, so we're gonna ask those families by October 30th to complete a form indicating whether they intend for their children to return in the hybrid model once their grade level is in the hybrid model, if not already, but no sooner than the start of the new quarter or trimester, or whether they intend to stay in remote instruction. Families who choose to stay in remote instruction, again, will be making a minimum commitment of the set full second quarter or the full second trimester, depending upon the level. So all that information, the dates will be outlined in the messaging, and that will go out, but that's just part of our ongoing planning as we continue our reopening plan. And then one last thing is we have our final superintendent's conference day of the year coming up on Wednesday, October 28th. Wednesdays are typically our remote learning days, but it will be a no-school day for students as our K-12 staff engage in professional development. While all staff will be on campus, we will follow a virtual format for our conference, just to keep people socially distanced in their own locations. We're very excited to have keynote speaker and session leader Tim Shanahan, who's international expert on literacy, and we're able to bring him to Middle Lakes virtually in partnership with Rainfeger Lakes Poses. And he will, again, be giving the keynote K-12, but then doing breakout sessions throughout the day on literacy and writing across grade levels. So all of our teachers will be able to benefit from that. Other themes of the day will be math instruction across grade levels, co-teaching strategies, and multi-tiered systems of support with a focus on tier one, tier two, and tier three interventions. And again, that's relevant to all grade levels, K through 12. So a great day of learning ahead for our staff, and we're very much looking forward to that. That's all for tonight.
Okay. Uh, moving on to public comment, I'm gonna go ahead and read the public comment section on the agenda that we have in front of us, just in case people at home don't have it, just as a reminder of how it will be run. So, "The Board of Education values the input of the Middle Lakes community and welcomes public comment on any topic related to board work with the exception of matters pertaining to individual personnel and/or students. All public comments must include appropriate language and observe proper decorum. If you wish, you may submit a comment using the Zoom question and answer box. Anyone making public comment must identify themselves by name and address. The board president will designate a representative of the board to read the public comments. The public comment period will be limited to a total of 30 minutes and one comment per person. Individual comments will be limited to two minutes. The board does not respond to items presented or questions raised through public comment. However, the board may discuss topics of public comment at a later time and/or contact an individual who submitted the con, the comment." Matt, would, Matt Sickles, would you be willing to read the comments? And Sarah Butler, would you be the time keeper if needed? Yes, no? I lost.
I think we just lost Mr. Sickles.
I think we did. Is he coming back?
I don't know. Amber, I can read the comment if you want me to. I have it up there. So we did receive one public comment from Mr. Zachary White from 1345 Bankard Road, Clifton Springs. He asked that the board consider to publicly and formally acknowledge the pain of isolation that Middle Lakes students are continuing to face, while also condemning large public gatherings. The students are hurting, and we all know it, but any large gatherings, including the one this past weekend, are irresponsible and reckless. No matter the intent, the event that transpired this past weekend turned out to be visibly unsafe and reflects poorly on our community and the respect that we all share for its constituents. I hope all who attended the event are well and that we may be able to continue to move forward with your reopening of our schools. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you so much for your comment, and in reference to that, I would just refer back to Mr. Sickles' report and the statement that he made. I think we're all concerned about, you know, everybody's health, so thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments? Uh, we can circle back at the end of the meeting, if everyone's comfortable doing that, and check the question in the answer box again. Okay, thank you again, Mr. White. Moving on to board discussion. This Saturday, we met for our annual board retreat and discussed our 2021 board goals, and Jake was our facilitator. Would you like to summarize that maybe, Jake, and then we can ask questions or discuss as needed?
Sorry about that. All right. Oh, so great, they're up there. So the board met on Saturday to review our goals from last year and, and then set new goals for this year. And remember, our goals are specific areas of interest that the board wishes to delve into in greater detail and sort of put markers in the sand on things that they're particularly interested in resolving in addition to, to, to. in addition to, to, to normal everyday board responsibilities, which of course, you know, managing, managing the, the large COVID crisis that, that all our students are facing. And so I'm not going to read each goal there. But the first one, the board wants is looking to engage students in board work and get feedback from boards. When number two, we were towards, getting towards the end of our strategic planning process that was multi-years going. And that paused because of the crisis. And so we're looking to continue that. The board has some, number three is the board has some internal items that it wants to do a better job, better work with and those, that most of those do build on previous board work. And it's been said already in this meeting that the board values its communication with the community and wants to continue enhancing that. So usually the board formally adopts these goals at this meeting. So I would like to make a motion to do so.
I second.
So if there's any further, if there's no further discussion, Amber, I think we can vote on.
Okay, sorry, I was on mute. Okay, if there are no, is, is there any discussion? Is there anything that somebody, anyone would like to bring up? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to new business. And before we do this, is there someone that would like to second? So that we're not all over the board for Sarah? Is there a volunteer? Did I see Sheri's hand raised? You want a second lady? Okay. Thanks Sheri. Okay, moving on to new business.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2020-21 Phelps Clifton Springs Professional Learning Plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, B, I would like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Phelps Clifton Springs Central School District and the Phelps Clifton Springs Employees Association dated October 14th, 2020.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, C, two, I make a motion to approve the agreement for services with Mary Carriola for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And to D, I make a motion to approve the agreement for services with Hillside Children's Center for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
And to E, I make a motion to approve the agreement for services with Easter Seals Kessler Center for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Onto personnel.
All right, A, we have a retirement. Mariana McWilliams, bus driver, effective June 30th, 2021, I make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed? Motion carry.
B, I make a motion to approve the intent to retire Terry Pulsion, bus driver, effective June 20th or 25th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Okay, C, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Jennifer La Bombard, typist, retroactive to October 14th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
And to D, appointments. If no one has any objections, I will block one through four. I make a motion to appoint those four people for their positions.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
E, extra summer hours. I make a motion to retroactively approve one day extra. Pay a regular hourly rate for the following employees. They're the three high school, school counselors.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
And on to F, substitute appointments. Make a motion to approve the substitute cleaners, Anna Smith and Carrie Schumacher, both retroactive to October 18th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto adjournment and executive session.
I make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting for the purpose of entering into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person and information relating to current or future investigation or prosecution of a criminal offense that would imperil effective law enforcement if disclosed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.